Okay, so we are coming out of executive session. So welcome to everyone who's joining us tonight and to 1623 Studios for posting the video for us. We're just starting our regular business meeting now. It's 16 on, what day is it? Tuesday, November 2nd. And we will begin with public comment. I just want to take a moment to remind everyone that this is an opportunity for comment, not debate. As our policy states, "A school committee meeting is a meeting of a government body at which members of the body deliberate over public business." We welcome the attendance of members of the school district community to view your school committee as it conducts its regular business meeting, but these meetings are not designed to be an opportunity for dialogue. Please know that while we will not be immediately engaging with your comments or answering questions, we are listening and paying attention to your concerns. During the meeting, we will be focusing on items that are listed on our posted agenda. If you would like to make a comment, please put your name and town in the chat. Please do not make other comments in the chat. We allow 20 minutes total for public comment, and we ask each person to limit their comments to three minutes. And so I'm going to check now to see if there are any public commenters in the chat. Do not see any public commenters in the chat. Is there anyone on the phone who is planning to make a public comment? There are no public commenters on the phone, so I guess we have no public comment tonight. I'm looking to see if our new student rep is in the participants, and I do not see Theo in there. So I'm going to go ahead and give my report, and we'll see if anybody else shows up. Is that okay, Pam?
Yep, that's fine. I'll keep an eye out for Theo, and I will check in with Principal Lucy to see if she knows if he'll be joining us.
Okay. So I just have a short few comments. Last time we heard the state of the school reports from the middle school and high school, and tonight we are looking forward to reports from our two elementary schools. Things seem to be going well. I had the opportunity to meet with our new student advisory group last week, and it was really great to connect with them and get their perspectives. It was also pajama day, so it was fun to be at high school and see everybody in their pajamas. In addition, we're gearing up to start this year's budget process, and I hope that people will save the date for our public hearing on the budget on December 15th. Thanks again for joining us and for continuing to participate in the conversations with your school committee in a kind and respectful manner. And we will just move right from that into the consent agenda, which includes warrants numbers, 1,014 and 1,060, as well as the minutes from September 8th and October 5th. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Burke.
Thank you, Eric. Is there a second?
Second, Warnock.
Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, I will do a roll call vote. Matt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. We're on to subcommittee reports. That was very fast. I'm so confused. Okay, subcommittee reports. Teresa and Chris, do you have anything from elementary facilities?
We have not met as a subcommittee, but I know elementary facilities have continued to move forward and that Pam and Avi might have something more to say about Manchester Memorial potentially.
Tying up a lot of loose ends, and Avi, if you want to put some more detail to that, you're welcome to. I would just say that tomorrow night, no tomorrow night, Thursday night, we're having a school building committee meeting a little bit off of our schedule. So if Teresa and Chris, you wanted to join, it's going to be virtual. It might help you come up to speed and start to prepare for our transition because things are coming to a close. I think the committee will continue probably throughout the end of the year, just to make sure all of the final details are in order. But it's exciting. Avi, anything specific you wanted to note?
Yeah, I think one of the big things is that the, as you know, we're in phase three, which is primarily around the external grounds now that the building is finished being constructed. And so that part is moving along very quickly, and it sounds like the inward loop and driveway and parking should be wrapped up within about a week, maybe two, maybe faster. So it's really imminent to have that portion done, in which case we're going to be really just moving to, there'll be some plantings and some landscaping to come, as well as, as Pam said, a lot of loose ends, which, you know, in fancy talk, they call the punch list, working through items, making sure everything's done. So it's really moving along quite well.
Awesome. Teresa, did you have the finance subcommittee report?
I do. We did meet as a collaborative team last week, with a collaboration meeting with our member towns representatives as well. Going in reverse order, just for simplicity, Memorial remains on time and under budget. That is the report out from collaboration on that, as Pam and Avi just noted. The big thing to come out of this collaboration meeting was that Ben Butrick, the Chair of the Finance Committee in Essex, brought forth an idea for discussion that Essex is looking to start a fund, actually, they're asking for seed money at Fall Town Meeting coming up soon, looking to start a fund basically to have in store in anticipation of the fluctuations that come from the apportionment process each year. This year, it's feeling a little stronger on the Essex end, a little tighter, because the apportionment has gone a different way. We know this cycles. And so that was brought forth as an idea, which we feel is a great idea. One thing that came with that was the idea, it was proposed that the district also contribute money to this fund, whether it's for Essex or Essex, one for Essex and one for Manchester for fairness. But the idea that the, the school district have, the phrase that kept getting used is some skin in the game in planning for the fluctuation in the apportionment each year. Pam and Avi did a really nice job of pointing out and really describing and making clear how the use of reserve funds every year that we've been doing this year, I think it's 335,000. That's exactly what that is, that the use of reserve funds to bring down the operating budget each year is our skin in the game. And so the discussion was able to move forward from that starting point, which was really great. But I really appreciated that Pam and Avi were able to clarify that. So on that, on that line, tomorrow night is our big joint Essex Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen meeting, at which Pam and Avi will be presenting basically the how of the budget process, especially for the newer finance committee members in Essex, but really for anybody who wants to know about this. So for anybody listening or anybody who knows someone who might be interested in how the budget comes to be, of course, we have our public hearings, our public budget hearings coming in December and January, but also tomorrow night would be really a good time to learn the intricacies presented by Pam and Avi about how this comes to be and to understand better what kinds of questions our town leadership have about that process and what kinds of concerns and how, how we're able to come to agreement on, on how this, this works, generally speaking. So again, that's at seven o'clock tomorrow night, and that is an in-person meeting at Town Hall in Essex. So that is our report. Did I miss anything? Matt, Pam, Avi?
Nope, that was thorough. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome.
And for negotiations, we have a meeting coming up, I think it's tomorrow, to start planning the negotiation process for the new contract cycle. So we will be getting started on that. And that's all we've got. Over to you, Pam, for the superintendent's report.
Sure. In the spirit of things being rather brief tonight, I'll start with a few quick COVID numbers. Okay, so the breaking news on COVID, which isn't really breaking anymore, but the latest is that the Department of Ed has extended the masking mandate to 11522. So that's pretty much the semester break in the year or the halfway point. This was welcome news, considering our conversation last time, pretty much aligned with this thinking. I think the intent here is to, first, we want to acknowledge the numbers have been great statewide, they're coming down. I think people feel the unknowns that are still out there is how does this play out during the holiday season as the weather drives people indoors even to a greater extent? And I think they're also hoping that we'll start to see vaccinations roll out for our youngest students so that it may be a little bit more of a clean cut transition out of masks instead of asking schools to try to keep track of who is and who isn't vaccinated and who is and who isn't supposed to be wearing masks. But I think the general hope is if the numbers support it, is that you could go to a voluntary mask use with all others being unmasked. And that's just my, that's my take on things and listening to conversations. So the long and the short of it is, we will be masking through mid-year. Our numbers remain low. We'll be doing our update tomorrow. So these numbers could change. These were end of the week numbers for last week, but still, with two months of school, we've had very minimal impact on attendance or quarantining as a result of COVID. We have no in-school spread. We're continuing with our reporting protocol as we outlined several weeks ago with posting weekly and communicating only if there, there is a need to. There hasn't been a need to yet. And the testing program, again, it's there if we need it, but it is such a narrow group of students that would be eligible for it. We haven't had any need to implement the test and stay yet. So all is good on the COVID front. And I should have led with this because I just want, I think my takeaway from last meeting to this meeting, the big news is October was a really festive month around schools. There just seems to be a ton of school spirit. People are coming out for athletic events. Student activities are in full swing. Students are taking advantage of the outdoors, having lunch out on the field. There just seems to be a real spirit about campus, all buildings, all areas. It just, there's just a lot to celebrate, and I think we're seeing the thread in all of the school presentations. The kids are just, kids and adults were happy to be back in school and doing our school thing, and it's just really showing through. The October open houses, I really liked the formats that we ended up with this year. I know we did a little bit of a delay in implementing them so we could assure we could do them in person. But they each represented the personalities of the building. They were well-attended. Teacher presentations were, you know, really on point, upbeat, and they just did an excellent job of reorienting, orienting people to the work that we do in school. So all in all, October was just a fantastic month. We're heading into playoff season. We have several teams going into competition. There's another big football game on Friday night. People have been coming out for those. They're, they're really, they're really fun events. Parent conferences were held today. All seemed to go well there, and the high school had its PD day. They don't do the in-person conferences, but they were working on their school improvement plan, integrating the strategic initiatives and the work on vision of the graduate. It's an EAS year for us, so there'll be more information on that as the year folds out. But just some really inspirational work being reported in terms of visioning out and thinking about what we want schools to be in the future as we pursue the goals in our strategic plan. And one quick update on strategic planning, school councils have the strategic framework and their beginning work at the, at the school level on integrating our big picture goals into their improvement plans. They will be delivered to school committee for approval in the spring. We'll be setting some dates for that. And the district is now working on mapping its DIP goals, timelines, and deliverables, and we hope to have an update for you on that in a few weeks, just putting a little bit more detail to the plan. So that's where we are at the schools. I don't know if there was anything that I, people were hoping I would mention that I didn't, please, you know, questions if you have them.
No, I just wanted to say, we don't have that many people on the call, but we need to thank our communities also for keeping our COVID numbers so low. We're just really lucky. I've been hearing from a couple of other people in other districts about, you know, schools, classrooms that are having to close and people who are having a lot of issues. So I think between our in-school mitigation strategies and our communities being really attentive, we're in a good place. So shout out to everybody out there for doing a good job.
And last bit of the vaccine news came today, five to 11 this week.
Oh, great.
CDC made, the panel made the recommendation, so here it goes.
Yay. Um, great. Does anybody else have questions or comments for Pam on her presentation? All right. The next item on our list is a CPAC update, but I heard from Cheryl, and she's not here, and she does not have a CPAC update. Everything's going fine, but just no report tonight.
Okay.
We could move on to our principal presentations if they're okay to do that.
Well, I know Jen has made the utmost effort to feel and get ready for tonight, and I see her on, on the line, so.
I am here. Can you hear me?
God.
You know, I'm gonna do this. I got this. Just looking for my presentation. Here we go. Can you, can you guys see that?
We can. If you put it in display mode, it'll probably take more of the screen.
Is that better?
Better.
Okay. All right. So if the tech works and my throat works, we're going to be good to go. Anyway, so thank you so much for having me here tonight. I do apologize for my squeakiness. It's been that kind of a month, that's all I can say. But, so I wanted to start, Pam had asked the principals to do a presentation for you with the goal of looking at the impact of the interrupted learning that took place last year, particularly for me to speak about Essex Elementary School. So I wanted to share with you the data that I'm going to share tonight. One is anecdotal data. Joanne Mano put together a survey for her staff, and she was kind enough to share it with the principals. So I think we all administered the same survey. We have counseling data that I would like to share with you, our MCAS scores from last spring, and we're using something new at the elementary level, Ames Web Plus Benchmark Assessment Data from the fall. As a matter of fact, we just finished wrapping up, I'd say in the last week. So the format for tonight, I think I did this a little bit differently than middle and high, as Pam likes to say, we put our own spin on things, so that's what I was doing. I wanted to start focusing on all of the positives that I noticed throughout all of the data. Then I will move into what we'll call the challenges of what we face in our data and the plans that we have to address these challenges. And then I'll wrap up, and I'll hopefully be able to take any questions if I can still talk by the end of my 20 minutes. So let's begin with all of the positives. As Pam mentioned earlier, we have some very happy students. The month of October, just like Pam said, was amazing. We had a lot of good weather where kids were outside. You can see a lot of pictures, our brand-new, amazing playground. You go out there, it is well-used. Kids love it. Adults love seeing the kids on it. You can see examples of very engaged students, active learning. Teachers are finding ways to bring their kids together. You can see Mrs. Kess Marsick there on the rug, keeping the kids, you know, three feet apart. There's an example in the middle of the page that is class working on their school charter and how they want to feel when they come to school, and I can tell you they are definitely feeling happy. So if we stick with positive news, this graph is grade three language arts. And if you will notice, from 2018, 19, and 21, the graph does not look all that different in language arts in grade three. It's, there's no significant change. So in my opinion, and I'm sure in yours as well, that's pretty good news after the year we had last year. Oops, excuse me, I think I went too far. There we go. Grade four ELA, same story. Really nothing to note of any significance in the last three years. As a matter of fact, it looks a little better than it did three years ago. Mind you, it is different kids, different tests, but it's still a bit of a form of comparison. Grade five ELA, same story. And grade five math, does not look that different. So the positive note from our Ames Web Plus, hang on, I think I might have skipped a slide. Hang on, I did. There you go. Sorry. A summary of the positive MCAS data. Essex Elementary is above the state average in all subject areas. Grades three and five, which are currently our fourth and sixth graders, improved in ELA. We had no students receive not meeting expectations in grade three ELA. Grade three ELA improved by nine percent this year, while overall, the state average decreased by six percent. Grade five ELA improved by three percent this year. Overall, the state average decreased by five percent. So we went up, others seemed to go down. And grade five math decreased by two percent, while the trend across the state showed overall decrease of about 16 percent. So that's all sort of the good news we gleaned from our MCAS data. So the new Ames Web Plus, for those of you who've been around a while, we used to use Ames Web. We've moved on to Ames Web Plus, which is much more robust than the Ames Web Assessment itself. So if you look here, these are the composites of, by grade level, average, above average, and well above average. So this would be the, the good news of how the kids did. And if you notice in first grade in math, the composite is where they take a number of different tests and they put them together to get a composite score. That's pretty good news. First grade is really the one that is the lowest here, and even that doesn't look all that bad. Reason kindergarten is not there is we did not do the composite score for kindergarten. The, both Essex and Memorial had agreed that it was very time-consuming because you have to do it one-on-one. There were a lot of tests, and we felt like we wanted to spend our time in a different way based on what we knew of our kids, and we're getting that data in a different way. So the positive Ames Web Plus reading data, but then I put a little caveat in there with a bit of a challenge mixed in, because this chart could have gone on the positive or the challenge. I didn't know where to put it. If you look at grade two through five, that's some pretty good data looking at average, above average, and well above average. The challenge is what you see at the K1 level, and I'm going to speak to that in a couple of minutes. So the positive data from our new Ames Web Plus Assessment, which just I mentioned at the top, it's nationally normed, and we're currently using it K to five, and we'll be doing this three times a year. Students in grade three through five do not seem to be impacted by the disruption in the school based on our current data. Less than 20% of the students in grade two to five are in need of intervention in reading. Less than 20% of students in grades three through five are in need of intervention in math, and just a little over 20% of students in grade two require math intervention. So what are the challenges that we are facing and how are we planning to address them? Pam, I feel like, did I miss the slide that talked about the anecdotal data from the staff, the positive? I feel like I might have. Bear with me for a second, I want to go back. Sometimes when you hit the cursor, it flips a couple of them. Did I do this? I don't think I did. Okay, let me share this really quickly because I had a feeling I missed it. So this was the survey that I spoke about that Joanne shared with us, where we sent it out to all the staff and we got feedback from them. And the positive things that were noted in the survey were, teachers say everyday math assessments indicate grade level proficiency at many of our grades. The upper grades, most students are reading at or above grade level. Many teachers report students look similar to other years. Most teachers report socially competent students who are able to work independently, and students are excited to learn. They love discussing books, engaging in active learning, and they are really happy to be back in with the capital in school. Quickly go through because I realized I missed that slide. Okay, so the challenges that we face. So this is, these are the challenges that the staff reported based on the survey. Most of the challenges that were noted were folks talking about our primary students, meaning the K1 students. It took longer this year for them to acclimate primary students to the routines of school. That is not a big surprise when you think about, our first graders were in kindergarten last year, and they started out fully remote. They'd never set foot in the school, then they went to hybrid, and then eventually came back full in person, although we still had some students who did not come back. So it's really not surprising that it would take them longer this year to acclimate to the routines of school because school was pretty foreign to them last year. Many of them have low stamina, and they're tired by the end of the day. That's not surprising either. I don't know about the rest of you, but some days I feel like I'm slogging by the end of the day, so these are five and six-year-olds. That's not a surprise. And it was reported that social interactions have appeared to be a bit impacted. Staff report social immaturity in regard to peer interactions and ability to sustain independent work. I will mention that I know Tricia and Joanne both mentioned this at particular grade levels, where it wasn't of huge significance, but they noticed a little bit of immaturity based on their past knowledge of developmental, you know, sort of where kids are at. And that's not really a surprise either because kids had very limited social interaction with each other during a very formidable time in their lives. But we already are seeing an improvement. It's amazing in this amount of time how we're already seeing kids kind of fill in that gap quite a bit. So how are we addressing these challenges that the teachers spoke about? Primary teachers have adjusted the pace of their day. They've slowed things down. They're recognizing where their kids are at, and they're pacing accordingly. Primary teachers have spent more time throughout the day teaching class and school routines, so they've slowed that down as well. Staff are modeling appropriate social interactions for their students. Teachers are doing more direct instruction regarding social skills. We're really happy to say we are rebooting Ruler, RTI, and our social emotional learning groups, which have been spotty at best for the last year and a half, and our primary teachers are providing play opportunities for students and hands-on activities. Our counseling data. Currently, the school adjustment counselor has a caseload of over 40 students. Experienced teachers and in some cases, parents are referring students to the counselor. In talking to our adjustment counselors, she says that the primary focus of her work right now is students with anxiety, trauma symptoms, and depression. How are we addressing this increase? Well, we've restructured our resources. The school psychologist will continue to evaluate students and share her reports at IP meetings, which is the primary function of her job, but she's increasing the number of small social emotional groups that she can see each week. The school psych and the counselor are collaborating to support our student population. The staff is rebooting Ruler this year with ongoing professional development to support their work, and teachers are using classroom time to address social needs in the moment and provide direct instruction to support all their students. The good news, because I know that probably seemed a little depressing, but the good news, in general, our students do seem very happy to be in school, even though we need those additional supports. So what I would tell you is even some of those students who I just spoke about, they are happy to be in school. It is very clear. You see them in the hallways, I see them at lunch, I see them at recess. They are happy to be in school, but they're needing some support with some of the things they're struggling with. The culture is positive. Students are heard laughing. It's actually fun for me that I, once in a while, have to go in the cafeteria and ask them to quiet down because they're, they're acting like kids, and they are laughing, and they're enjoying school. Being live in school seems to be helping everyone, and the tone is great. And I have to report, we have had very few disciplined office references this year, minimal. So what challenges has our MCAS data shown us? If you look at this report, this is grade three in math, and if you look at the key off to the right, the orange section is partially meeting expectations. So if you look at the orange in 2018 and 19, it was hovering around 32%, whereas that partially meeting expectation is pretty much doubled over into this last year. So these would be our current fourth grade students. So remember, these are the challenges I'm speaking about. If you look at grade four math, which is our current fifth grade, very similar story. So what you're talking about is more kids are falling into that partially meeting, which means they're almost there. We kind of use the term, they're hanging on the cusp, you know? These are frequently the kids that we think with some RTI, they're going to get the boost These are frequently the kids that we think with some RTI, they're going to get the boost that they need. And with teachers differentiating their instruction, they're going to get the boost that they need to kind of get back into that green category. So a summary of the challenge areas that we learned about. Grade three and four, which are our current fourth and fifth graders, have shown a decrease in math scores, which follows the exact trend that we saw across the state. How are we addressing this? We're looking at item analysis of these assessments to provide targeted instruction. We are offering an after-school study skills slash MCAS remediation. It's targeted at specific students and will address the areas that they, they need to focus on. We are starting up our WIN RTI groups this year with a focus on math in fourth and fifth grade. We usually prioritize reading, but for fourth and fifth grade this year, we're prioritizing math. And I'm really happy to report that as part of our teacher evaluation cycle, the teachers took it upon themselves to make this part of their student learning goal to focus on improving math computation. They looked at the data, they knew they had extra work to do, and they wrote very targeted goals for their own purpose. And that's how they're being evaluated this year, so they're taking it very seriously. So what does the Ames Web Plus show? So if you remember that bar graph that I showed you in the good news department, there was something way off to the left that was not such good news. And that's what I want to speak about right now. So our kindergarten students, brand new to us this year. Fourteen of thirty-six students showed up as high need in reading. Six of thirty-six students are moderate need in reading. And on each of the math measures, approximately twelve of the thirty-six are at risk. So that, that's definitely not a good news story with these kids that are coming into us. But I will also tell you that to note, we had seven students who did not attend any formal preschool whatsoever. And many students had very limited exposure to what we would consider like sort of pre-academic readiness type skills because they weren't living in a COVID world. And, you know, you think about these three, four, or five-year-olds, what they were experiencing. Our first grade students, seventeen of forty students are high need in reading. Ten of forty are moderate need in reading. And six students of thirty-nine are high, high need in math. Thirteen students of thirty-nine are moderate need in math. I would like to point out to you that of our forty students, fourteen of them were new students to Essex Elementary this year. In my thirteen years at Essex, that's unprecedented, we've never seen that. So I think it was a host of things. I think for kindergarten, I know my own son did not send his daughter the way he typically would have to the public school. I think we had a lot of parents that homeschooled. I think in talking to Angela, we had quite a few homeschool families. We had some that, you know, were making their own plans, so it's to no fault of theirs. I'm just saying that these fourteen students were not at Essex Elementary School last year. So whatever we might have been doing to support these kids, we weren't able to do that last year. So how is this being addressed? So we've looked at this and we take this very seriously. I've met with all of the teachers, the reading teachers, I've met with Angela, I've met with Pam. We're going to provide Title One Small Group Literacy Support for targeted students in K and one. We've never done Title One in K. We usually look at different grades, but because of the need that I just shared with you, we're targeting Title One Small Groups in K and one. We're resuming our full-day data meetings, we actually start on Friday, we'll be doing those three times a year. And that's where we review all of the data and determine targeted needs for each class and student and develop Tier One Plan. Which for those of you who don't know, Tier One is what's happening in the general ed classroom every day. We're strategically reallocating our reading TAs to focus on Tier One push-in support. And we're deploying them where they're most needed. We're changing it up entirely this year. We are deploying our reading specialists to provide explicit interventions in K one throughout the entire day to close the gaps. And this is where you look at the science of reading, where they talk about taking your most talented people and hitting the young kids that are having the difficulties early and very clearly and head-on. So that's what we are doing. So our two really outstanding reading folks are going to be working with all of the K one students who are showing high need. We're using diagnostic assessments in grades K through two to provide targeted Tier One approach in phonics. And what this means is that in the battery of assessments we've done, every teacher is going to get sort of a spreadsheet of the kids in their class and what skills that they sort of possess at this time in terms of phonics and where the gaps are. And that way, the teachers can look very specifically at how they're grouping their students, what they're spending more time on. And they're going to take some time to actually look at that carefully. As a follow-up, same thing I said about the upper grade teachers. These K one teachers have developed professional goals about shifting their practice to integrate the new learning that they have on the science of reading. So we're all doing a book study about the science of reading and they're making shifts in their practice from their previous practice to what the science is telling us. None of them are giant shifts, they are subtle shifts, but they should make an impactful difference. And they put that as their professional goal for their evaluation this year. We set targeted goals for students and we're going to monitor their progress, progress very closely. Our common planning meetings that we hold weekly will be used to review the progress monitored data and discuss instructional practices to support achievement. And the focus that we have for professional development is on the science of reading in conjunction with our new literacy curriculum wonders. So there is good news. We have so much to be thankful for, and I think we all need to remind ourselves of that every once in a while because we can, including myself, get a little down-drawn and that we're still dealing with this. But when I think back a year ago where we were and where we are right now, I think we have a lot to be thankful for. Teresa just said the vaccine's coming online in the next week for our five-year-olds to eleven-year-olds. I'm thrilled for the students in our school, I'm thrilled for my grandchildren, and I think it's going to make a big difference in a lot of our lives. We are all back together as a community and we're engaging all of our students. The culture at Essex Elementary is as positive as ever. As usual, we have plans to address anything that we face. We face it together as a team, we're problem solvers and we're really great collaborators. And I am truly grateful, the great staff that I have, the students and the families have been so incredibly supportive through all of these hard times. So if we can collectively get through last year, I think we can really do anything. So I'm just sharing that, that's my, my can-do attitude, we can do anything. So that is it. I actually had my stopwatch going because I wanted to see how long I took and I did it because I tend to be too long-winded, so yay me. Anyway, I'll open it up for questions and we can go from there.
Jennifer, I don't have any questions, but I want to say that was a great presentation. And thank you so much for being able to come out and see us, even though you're losing your voice and you sound horrible. We really appreciate it. And I'm really excited about everything that you said, especially, you know, I'm a reading geek, so I'm excited about all the science of reading stuff. But mostly about hearing that the kids are so happy. But does, does anybody on the school committee have questions for Jen?
Can you still hear me, Sarah?
Can I, can I still hear you? Yeah.
When I woke up this morning and I went to speak to my husband in the kitchen, nothing came out of my mouth. So I quickly texted Pam and said, I can't, I can't. And then all of a sudden, in the mid of the day, it magically kind of started coming back. So I texted, okay, okay, I can do it. So this is actually good, so I'm glad I made it through, so thank you for appreciating.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay, it's all good.
Do any of our elementary school parents have questions for Jennifer or comments?
I do.
Okay.
Jennifer, I agree with you, my kids have never been so excited to physically go to school and all of their friends also. It's so exciting to see their excitement and their disappointment when there's a day canceled or when, you know, it's, it's a shift and it's, it's fun to watch. I have some questions about the RTI. Just in terms of how you're, how you're juggling the numbers. It seems like so if there are the majority of first graders are identified as either high or moderate risk, are all of those kids going into RTI groups? Or is that just bolstering Tier One support? Or I mean?
So we're gonna, it's a good question, Kate, we're going to do all of the above. You know Caitlin and Dawn, right, our two reading specialists? You know, typically they do sort of support in classrooms and then they do win groups. So what we're actually doing very differently this year is they are going to be seeing all the K and one kids throughout the entire day. We are not using a set win block because we'd never be able to meet them all. So they're going to be working really hard, so if you love our reading teachers, send them, send them some, some love. They were great about this, they saw the data, they understood why we're a little bit in crisis mode and we got to close up this gap quickly. So we're doing that, we're taking some push-in support to be in the Tier One part, which is the general ed, to also help the classroom teachers with their groupings. So we're doing kind of a host of things. They will still have a win block. And we will be looking at math during the win blocks and trying to support kids that need that. So on Friday, we have our, beginning our data meeting. So we don't typically go in with sort of this whole infrastructure setup, but because of the situation we're in right now, we actually have a lot of it sort of mapped out already, and then we'll meet with the teachers and get all their input. We'll look at the data together and then we'll kind of finish putting all the pieces together. So by the end of next week, I'll be able to really address more specifically if you had a question like that. But for now, I, I think we have a full-court press going on and everybody's on board and was great about it.
That's great, thank you. Does that mean that the reading specialists are only working with K one this year?
We're going to do this up until our mid-year data meetings and then, you know, we look at the data. So I don't honestly know what's going to happen come January. Caitlin, I shouldn't use names, but we all know who they are, right? Half of her job is Title One. And so the Title One part of her job is going to bring her to be doing small groups, which in this case she will be doing. She is going to be doing some K one. But we also have support going in at other grades for different things. So we're basically targeting the K one kids first. We're setting up the structure of their day throughout the day using the two reading folks. We're pushing in where we can. We're kind of putting the win lock in to supplement all of that stuff. And then wherever there might be little opportunities, we will be using the reading specialists in other ways. They will still attend common planning meetings because their input is incredibly valuable when we're looking at the data. They'll still be supportive, you know, after school, we have meetings and we do PD, that kind of stuff. So, you know, they're not giving up all of that, but they're giving up quite a bit to be able to push, you know, push forward with this crisis situation. But I do believe, I think we can close this up, I really do.
That's great, thank you. And then for any parents listening, what should parents be expecting in terms of communication about intervention, progress monitoring, all of that sort of stuff?
Yep, so we're going to have to look at that at our data meetings because we're probably going to have to readjust sort of, you know, we kind of had our standard letter because we'd been doing things similarly for so long and that's going to change a little bit. And we haven't actually gotten that far, we know clearly communication's going to happen. But we're probably going to have to readjust, you know, letters, how we're going to share this with parents. Because, you know, you're in these meetings, you're in the know, whereas most of them are not. So we're going to have to really look at it. Honestly, you know, you and Teresa, if you see communication coming out, you have thoughts of ways that we could make it more robust or, you know, I could beef it up in some way, I'm always open to it. I think what's hard is when you're mired in the work you're doing, you often forget that other people have no clue what you're talking about. So definitely open to feedback, but hopefully after all the data meetings are done, we can figure out what the communication's going to look like for folks. And as always, they can reach out to their classroom teachers and find out, you know, what's going on.
Great, just one more. Are the after, I I hadn't, the after-school groups were news to me, so I'm just interested to hear if those are up and running and what grades those are, what?
Yep, they're just targeting fourth and fifth grade and they were targeting very specific students. So your child probably wasn't being targeted in that way. They were looking at very discreet data. And that does not mean that, you know, they'll do like an eight-week block and that after eight weeks, they could be looking at some different kids. Because this is going to be kind of a cyclical thing where they'll keep taking.
And those are based on Ames Web, MCAS, teacher, the whole gamut.
So the first round really wasn't as much teacher recommendation because honestly, it was not fair to those teachers who didn't know the kids very well. So the teachers doing the work actually looked at the MCAS data and drilled down a bit. And they kind of selected kids that they felt like they could give maybe eight weeks of intervention and those kids could kind of move on and now they'll look at their next group. So that whole thing's going to be very fluid as we move forward. Excuse me, I think that the teachers of fourth and fifth grade currently will have more input into the recommendations because then they'll really know their kids a lot better.
Great, thank you so much, Jennifer, I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
I have a couple of quick questions, is that all right, Sarah?
Yeah.
Um, first of all, thank you, I have to say that's, the presentation you just gave was the exact amount of information, like the, the level of detail, the everything. Like it was exactly what, what is useful for me anyway, as a, as a semi-literate person coming to this. You know, I don't know all the jargon and everything, but you know, maybe a little more than the average parent just from being here, so thank you, that was, that was really perfect. I just have a couple of quick questions. The, the forty students that the school counselor, adjustment counselor is carrying on caseload right now, how does that compare to a typical year?
It's quite a bit more than.
Is it, okay.
Yeah, it's pretty significant. So, you know, we're making it work. You know, you know, she and I meet and she and I meet with the school psychologist and we sort of look at where we can be more efficient with maybe creating a group of kids that could be serviced more that way. Which is tricky for an adjustment counselor because often what they're dealing with is more personal to a student. But the school psychologist has definitely picked up more than she has in the past because we're trying to make sure we're meeting the needs of our kids. And, you know, as I said to Kate with some of her questions, this is going to be fluid. Because when we meet and we talk about this, if we feel like kids are doing well and they're okay, this isn't like, you know, not to be silly, but you know, a life sentence, it's sort of like, okay, look, you know, maybe there was some anxiety, some kids were having separation anxiety coming into school after not being in school. And, you know, after about six, eight weeks, they seem like they've really got it. The counselor feels like they're good, she'll probably meet with the parents, discharge them, and then we can move some more kids in. So it is fluid, but I will tell you, the numbers are considerably higher than what we typically see, a lot higher.
Okay. And then how is, obviously you have to put a ton of work and effort into remediation this year, no question. How is the pacing otherwise generally? Are we going to end up, I mean, is it going to be a couple of years before we get back on a traditional pace? Or is it, where do you, do you have anything to comment about that?
Well, you know, honestly, that's a really good question because I think that's what everybody's grappling with when I talk to other principals and curriculum people in other districts. That's really the, the thing we're all trying to sort out. But based on my impression and when talking to teachers, I would say third, fourth, and fifth grade, really the kids, I think developmentally, they just seem to be a little better at dealing with, not that anybody dealt well with last year, but, you know, the format in which they were learning, clearly the upper grade kids were able to manage that. And that's kind of why you heard that from middle and high school as well. So I would say that when I talk to teachers, what they might notice is small pockets of gaps and things where they realize they have to pull out of their own, you know, general curriculum for a little bit and do a little reteaching, retooling, and then get back in. But it's really subject to change based on sort of what they're seeing in front of them when they're instructing. And sometimes it's like retooling with a small group of kids, you know, they'll pull them aside and they, they're really good at looking at their data and making those decisions. The, the primary kids is where it's trickier. Because, you know, in order to accelerate kids, you don't want to stop with their core curriculum because now you're creating another problem. But it is really tricky trying to find the balance between the core curriculum that we need to instruct and where we need to fill the gaps. So I think that's where our common planning meetings are going to be, this constant kind of push and pull and finding that balance. But I think we do so well at collaborating together and having these discussions that we could kind of help each other with that. I'm hoping with what we're doing in K one this year, we are really going to see that gap close up. And then happy kids back in school and then developmentally, it's just going to start taking off. Because you know what? Kids learn, you know, we all know, even as parents, kind of, they learn in spite of us sometimes, right? So I, I would venture a guess that we'll be okay, but I certainly think that, you know, we can keep you posted on what we're noticing.
Thank you, and I have just one final question. My, my final question is, do you have what you need? This is a huge undertaking and, and we know it's going to take time. And I know that the principals are always so good with making do with what they have and, and all through COVID, you guys did that so well. But as we are starting to go through the budget process as well and helping our communities understand what resources are truly needed to get through this and get kids back to where we need them, do you have what you need to get this work done?
Well, some of the things that we don't have, probably don't have, you know, there's not a school district around that can find substitute teachers. So while that might seem somewhat mundane, you know, a sub, it's huge, it's huge. Because if, you know, a second grade teacher calls in sick on a Thursday morning, Because if, you know, a second grade teacher calls in sick on a Thursday morning. I have to have somebody in front of that class. I can't have the kids coming in. And if you have no one picking it up like we used to do in the system we use. You know, eight o'clock comes, I've got to figure it out. And. What ends up happening is, you know, you end up pulling someone, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul, like what are you gonna do? And you know, if that's once in a while, it's not a problem. We've done that for years when we've had a glitch. But it's so significant right now, and I know it is in every school that I speak to principals. That when you're taking someone out of what they do and putting them in a classroom. To, you know, run a class for a day.
Yeah.
You're creating gaps of a different kind in other places. So if these people are interventionists or, you know, they're support people or. Whomever they are, you know, if I pull a reading teacher. Now the kids that I just told you about, they're not getting what they need. So this isn't a, a budgetary thing. It's not something that I don't know that anybody can actually fix, but. It's really important that you're aware of it because. Every day I'm faced with how we're gonna manage it. I keep like a checklist to make sure I'm not hitting the same people up all the time. So that's critical. Recession monitor is the same thing. Um, Maggie, the secretary and I have been covering different lunch blocks when we're down because we, we're down one right now and. How do you keep the kids safe? You have to have an adult in there. So that's what I'm struggling with. Um, as far as budget goes. I think when we bring forth our, you know, our, our numbers to Avi and Pam in the central office and to you guys. It'll reflect what we know we need moving forward because there are some things that we need. Um, especially as we start looking at this data, we're gonna have to. Um, talk about resources, but for right now. I think we're very fortunate to have the really amazing people we have so that they can do this targeted work for us. And the fact that they're so open to doing it. Without complaining, they're amazing. So my hat's off to. To all of these folks. Everybody's kind of going at it the way they need to, so I'm proud of them.
Great. Thank you very much.
If, if I may, one last real quick question for Jennifer. Number one, thanks for, again, for being here with your voice. Hope we're not using the last of it. I've got much more, I don't know, petty concern. I know. We're talking about winding up the MMS project. How is the, the playground putting the finishing touches on that? Schedule wise, are we getting what we need for winter? Um, I saw something from Jake Foster earlier today and just wanted to make sure that we are bringing that to a close.
Yeah. Ken, let me hold that thought just for one second and then I'll come back to it because I realized I forgot to, one part of Teresa's question. Teresa, back to that budgetary thing, the notion of math support, I realized I forgot to say. Like we've kind of talked about a math specialist for a lot of years, but. Now that we're looking at our data and we're being more specific, we really need a math specialist or a math coach or however you want to frame it. At our school. So I didn't want to forget to say that as far as the playground goes. Um, you know, I mean, I wish Jason was on the call because he would speak to it. He has tried so hard. I don't know what's going on, you know, if anybody's got contract work going on in their homes, which we have, like, I, it makes you crazy. So you know, the playground is fully functional, kids are on it, they're having a ball. All of this bizarre torrential rain and weather that we've had has definitely been. Tricky because they have not been able to plant on that hill behind it yet. So as you know, then the runoff happens. So you know, we've been having some difficulty with that. Um, he's got folks that have given him quotes and they tell him they're gonna do the work and. Um. You know, I don't know where we're at. I thought it was gonna be happening really soon and now I'm actually not sure. Um, so I think, um, Jake Foster sent that email out really as a check.
Yes. Now, we probably should be the least of your concerns, but just wanted to make sure that and to see Avi's on. So. Avi and Jason, I'm sure are on and doing the best they can.
I'm thrilled the kids can play on it.
Exactly. That's what matters.
It's not the most beautiful thing right now, but honest to God, those kids don't care. They're having a ball. It's the rest of us that wish we could just kind of get the mess cleaned up, but. I, I'm pretty certain we're hoping to have like a ribbon cutting in May. Um, which actually works out okay because the weather's been so dicey and. Um, so you know, we, PTO is working on planning a fun event for families and a ribbon cutting and we could do, you know. We're working on naming it where I think, uh, Jesse Palm has gotten involved in doing an election with the kids. So we, we've got good stuff going on, but. Probably Avi or Jason could speak more to the function of the shrubs and the path and all of that.
Awesome. Thank you.
The only thing I would add, if anyone, just very briefly, is just I, I know, um. Yeah, I'm not sure the latest with Jeffrey's Creek, who I know is one of the contractors that, um, who's been super helpful and has reached out with, um. Jason, one of the things that Jason and I, I know talked about was just making sure that for all, you know, we're now in that phase where we're doing. All of the things that were outside of the school committee stabilization funding scope. And as that, as that has evolved, uh, you know, Jason and I have just been talking continuously about making sure that. Whatever the scope of work is, we have it outlined with the estimated costs and making sure that we have. The, um, funding available. I know there's probably more than enough funding for that one component. But because we have multiple components, we, we really need to treat it like a overall budgeted projects to make sure we don't. Get started through sixty percent and then maybe run out of funding for the last twenty percent. So I. I'm not sure what the latest on that, but I do know that that's one factor and obviously we're at some point gonna get into an issue of just, um, timing.
Awesome. Thanks, Avi.
Okay, if I'm you myself at this point.
Jennifer, thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I think, uh, I think I'm next. Um. Just wanted to start by, by thanking Jennifer. Actually, can everyone hear me before I, uh, get too far into this? All right. I just want to start by thanking Jennifer. She, um, you know, she really kind of set the stage nicely and was able to, uh. Um, you know, kind of, um, explain a lot of the concepts that you'll hear me talk about as well. Um, so I will, I'm trying to not repeat myself. Just give me one second here. Okay. All right. Um, so it's nice to see the, the, our new school community members, Chris. Um, nice to see you on screen anyway. And Akid, I think, I don't think we've met yet, but, uh, nice to meet you. Nice to see you here. Um, I want to start off with a huge thank you for, 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 to the whole community. Um, you can see the picture here. Um, of our kindergartners enjoying, um, one of our new playgrounds. Um, so the new, the new school has three playgrounds. This is a K to one playground. We also have a pre-K playground, um, that is, um, fully open at this point and then, um. A K two five playground, um, that is still under construction. Um, so this one obviously is, um, a nautical theme. Uh, you can't see it in the picture, but there are. Um, kind of cutouts, so to speak, in the, um, in the soft surface of, you know, starfish and sharks and that kind of thing. So. Um, it's a really cool, um, kind of imaginative place for the kids to play, um, and it is already getting a ton of use. I had the opportunity to, um, uh, walk around the building today with Eric, um, to show him, um, kind of. Firsthand, some of the ins and outs, um, that you might not see at an open house. Uh, and also Ken and I, um, spent some time out, um, uh, I guess I'll say on the grounds, I'm looking at kind of where. The new building connects to, um, to the town, um, with crosswalks and that sort of thing. Um, so if anyone hasn't been over to see the new building. Um, just shoot me an email. I'd love to, uh, take you around personally and show you some of the. You know, um, the things that you might not see in a presentation. Um, there are some really. Uh, really cool educational features to this building, but also, um, a lot of really cool sa- uh, safety, uh, features that, that we were able to. Make part of the, um. Part of the project. Um, I also want to start off by saying a huge thank you to our, our parent and staff partnership. Um, you know, the, this presentation tonight really is a celebration of. Um, of their work, of our students and of that parent and, and teacher partnership. I'm, I'm just the guy steering the boat. Um, they were the ones that kind of made the boat go. So I'm really thankful to, um, the staff and, and parents. Um, and, and also to the students who, who worked so hard last year. Um, so just kind of an overview of what, what we're going to be talking about tonight. Um, I'll start off with some general observations, just kind of, you know, how, how things are going at this school. Uh, and, um, some anecdotal schools, um, school culture data. Uh, so I did, um, as Jennifer said, we, we, um. We all used a similar survey, um, that we use with all of our staff. I, um, had, had my staff take it at a, uh, um, at a staff meeting. So. You know, we had a hundred percent participation, which was great. Um, and so I'll, I'll kind of report out on, on. Um, the information there. Um, I, I'll be honest with you. It was. It was, it was really riveting, um, some of the anecdotes that they shared. Um, there's. You know, there's a lot going on. So, um, you know, I definitely want to spend more time taking a closer look at that, but I'll give you the, the overview tonight. Um, then we're gonna look at, um, our, our academic performance as well. Um, so our M-CAS performance comparison, so comparing two thousand nineteen, the last time we. Uh, we took M-CAS to, um, this past spring, um, to kind of see where the students are performing. Uh, then also take a look at, at those Ames Web results, um, for our at-risk, uh, readers and, uh, math students. Um, so the general observation, so what we're seeing, um, at Memorial School, we're seeing, uh, very strong academic performance. Um, we are also seeing, um, um, definitely a, a major impact on the social emotional side. Um, for our students, um, self-control, uh, behavior. Um, you know, even just emotions, um, there, there's, there's definitely some good that's coming out of it. Um, but we're definitely seeing things that are looking a little bit different than, than, um, than historically. Um, and then we're also seeing, um, that there was, there was really a, a greater impact. Um, uh, from the pandemic in the, in the younger grades than in the older grades. Um, and I can kind of. You know, speak to my own experience as a parent. I have a currently this year, a first grader, a. Uh, seventh grader and a sophomore in high school, and it was definitely much more natural. Uh, for my older two to learn remotely than it was for my, my daughter who was in kindergarten. So. Um, I wasn't surprised, um, to see that in the school as well. Um, but just anecdotally, um, I, I would say that, you know, students, staff and families are just like the word pride. Um, um, is just like emanating the building. Um, they're very, very proud of their new school, our open house. Um, that we had, um, I was a little nervous about having, um, an open house kind of in the. You know, the, the post-pandemic climate, um, you know, we're not fully out of things, but, um. You know, I, I was talking to the staff and I said that the parents really, they've been really, really patient. They've waited a really long time. We've been able to be, you know, last year partially in the building, this year fully in the building, um, with their kids. And they've never even seen, um, where their kids are learning. So. Um, we did just a traditional open house. Everyone come, um, the students were the tour guides, um, and just gave everybody a chance to really come together as a community. I gotta tell you, it was just great to have the, the, the energy and life, um, in the building that night and just the. The sense of pride on, on, on the side of the staff, kind of showing off our building, the students showing off the building and the parents. Most of them seeing it for the first time was really incredible. Um, the students and staff are really excited to be back together in school. Um, you know, the, the remote environment, we did what we needed to do, um, for that time period, but it's just really great to. Um, have that person-to-person human, um, you know, interaction in school, um, you know, e- even though we still have the masks. Um, you know, a nice thing this year is when they're out at recess, they, they don't have masks. So, um, you know, it, you, you get to see smiles. Um, that, you know, kids haven't been able to see as much of, um, as, as they have historically. Um, and the other, the other word that kind of comes to mind is, um, inspired. Um, I, I'm seeing staff really inspired by. Um, our new teaching spaces. Um, I'm seeing a lot of, you know, kind of initial conversations of innovative things, um, that, that the spaces are. Inspiring them to think about, uh, the, the building is designed with a lot of unique characteristics, um, to promote collaboration. Um, to kind of make learning visible, um, so that the kids aren't just kind of in their, the four walls of their classroom. There are a lot of places that teachers can go to. Um, take their whole class to kind of break out and, and spread out or even just to have. Small groups of kids. So you wa- when you walk up and down the halls, um, you'll see a lot of small groups of kids, um. You know, working together collaboratively on, on assignments and projects, which is, which is really neat. And so this slide just kind of brings this all to life. Um, we've got this amazing view from the second floor out the, uh, out the back window. It overlooks the Brook Street. Um, uh, the turf field. I say it's the second best view in town, uh, the first obviously is Singing Beach, um, but it's pretty incredible, um, up there. Um, we have our kindergarten students again down there. Um, they were actually measuring the rainfall, um, which we've all experienced over the last few weeks. Uh, and, um, kind of comparing, uh, what the rainfall is like typically. Um, the bottom right-hand corner there, you have, um, some families at, at open house enjoying the new library media center, which is. You know, really kind of a, a center of activity in this building, um, which has been great. On the left-hand side, you can see the, the classroom there with the, um. Uh, with the, kind of the dry erase cabinets. Um, that's one of the project rooms. So those are, um, students working on a collaborative project altogether. And then a lot of the pictures of the, you know, breakout spaces, uh, where kids are working in other areas. Um, so that staff survey, like I said, it was really, um, it, it, it just, it said a lot. Um, there was a lot in there. Um, and I think you're gonna hear a lot of similar things, um, to what Jennifer was saying over at Essex. Um, so some things that we're, that we're working on with our students this year that typically we, we might not be, be working on at the same level. Um, maturity, um, we're definitely seeing, um, students struggling, working in groups. Um, they're, the, the way they're playing is, is, um. Um, the teachers would, would, would say that it's immature, um, compared to typical or usual. So. Um, you know, older students playing, um, things and games like, you know, the way younger students typically would play. Um, so maybe like a, you know, fourth graders playing like imaginary animal, animal play outside. Um, we're also seeing some challenges with physical space, um, and boundaries, physical boundaries between students, um, especially at unstructured times. Um, I think, I think what that is, is, you know, for, for so long, we're, we've been missing the input from here, um, with the masks on. And so, um, you know, there's so much communication that happens right here and when, when, you know, words aren't, um. Working or kind of getting us what we, we need them to get, we can also. Um, and, you know, enhance that with facial expressions and we're not really able to do that as well. Um, and we haven't for, for a while. So we're seeing kids kind of use their hands and, you know, to, to kind of get what they want. Um, as opposed to using, you know, their words and, and their facial expression. So. It's something we're working on, but I, I noticed that, that Jennifer mentioned, uh, that, that they're already seeing improvement. We're seeing huge improvement. Um, I actually have had, um, an increased number of office referrals for discipline. Um, and, um, I, I think the interesting thing is. Every single time when they come down and I have a conversation with them. Um, you know, it's, okay, um, I, I know I shouldn't have done that, um, and, and now I won't and they don't. It's funny. It's almost like they just needed to be reminded. That, you know, when you're out in the neighborhood and you're wrestling around and that sort of thing, that's different than the school environment and you can't do that here and. You know, so far they've been okay and, and, um, and they've made the adjustments. So we're seeing. You know, we're seeing good improvement there as well. Um, you know, we're working on independence. Um, I think, you know, after what they've been through the past couple of years, independence was certainly so- something that suffered. Um, you know, they, they needed a lot of support at home, um, especially when we were, you know, in that remote environment, trying to navigate technology and that sort of thing. So trying to get them back to that. Um, you know, independent learner that, that we had in the past. We're also seeing, um, a lot of executive functioning, um, challenges, organizing materials and assignments and tasks. Maintaining focus on the task at hand at that, at that one moment. I mean, you think of the impact of technology, you know, being on technology as much as they were. You know, so it's, you know, it's not surprising. And then even just the stamina, you know, the stamina of the, of the school day. Um, it's just, they're just not used to it. I think they're, they're building up their stamina, but you know, the beginning of the school year, they definitely, they, they, they seem tired. Um, and then, um, we're also working on man- managing anxiety, um, a- as was mentioned before, we're, we're certainly seeing a little bit more of that. Um, this year than, than typical. Um, so the things that, that, that our students are bringing in to our school with them, um, every single day. They're just super happy to be in school. I mean, I, I just, uh, you know. It sounds like a cliche, but they, they just, they just really are. Like when you go up to kids in the hallway or in the classroom or on the playground or cafeteria. And you talk to them, they're just, they're just happy. Um, and I think it's because, um. You know, they're, they're all together and, you know, they're with their teachers and their friends and I think they miss that, you know? Um, so, um, one thing that was interesting was that students, um, seem to enjoy. And are more comfortable sharing their feelings during our social emotional learning work, um, than in the past. They're a little bit more open about sharing their feelings. Um, and maybe it's because, you know, of the work that we've done, maybe it's because of the time that they, you know, the additional time they had at home with their families. Um, where maybe they did some more of that, um, or, or maybe there's just more feelings that they, that they want to get out. So. Um, that, that's been great to see. Um, they just seem super excited to learn in person and, you know, actually touch things and share things and. Um, you know, they, they seem ac- very academically strong. Um, they seem more adaptable and flexible. And the interesting thing was that was something that we. Kind of, um, assumed might happen, um, after everything that they went through, but people are actually seeing them being more adaptable and flexible, which is great. Um, obviously a huge skill that they, that they picked up through this process is they're very confident with technology. Um, you know, I think we all had to up our game there and, and, and the kids, um, you know, the kids are just really, really confident and comfortable with technology. Um, we're definitely trying to, trying to balance, um, the, the use of technology now, you know, we want, we want to use it to enhance our lessons and. You know, to be efficient and that sort of thing, but, um, it, it's great to have no screen time as well. Um. And then just when you kind of go through the comments from the teachers and staff, you just heard, you know, happy, 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 happy was all, all through, um, all throughout. So. Um, just wanted to kind of. Accentuate that a little bit. Um, so in terms of our, um, climate and culture, things that we're, we're, um, going to do in terms of, um, actions this year. Uh, we're increasing our social emotional learning, uh, focus in, in a few ways. Um, we're going to kind of, um, you know, kind of reboot and reignite ruler. Um, we, there are some new, um, ruler now has, um. Um, actual lessons, um, which was something that did, that it didn't have in the past. It kind of had concepts that, that schools were, were, um. Expected to kind of teach on their own, but now there are actual lessons that we're going to explore. Um, our specialists also are working on professional development to integrate ruler into, um, into their, into their classes. You know, it's kind of starting, you know, started at the beginning of the, our, our opening staff meeting. Um, I had everybody do a check-in on the mood meter, um, and everybody kind of looked at me like, really? Um, and, um, we had like, it's just a great dialogue about where people were. And we had like just a great dialogue about where people were and how they were feeling. And so we kick off every staff meeting that way now. And I know a lot of classrooms are kicking off every, every morning that way. You know, it's just, excuse me, it's just kind of a nice, a nice way to, to check where people are and, and to give, give people an opportunity if they're comfortable and want to, to, to share how they're feeling. Excuse me, the nice thing about the, the mood meter is there are so many different emotions on there that, you know, you might be feeling one that you're not comfortable sharing, but there's plenty of others on there that you're, that you're feeling and you, and you can find one that you're comfortable with. So another thing is on second step, so we use second step as our anti bullying curriculum, but there's a whole social emotional learning component to it. So our counselor is going to be working on grade level lessons. So she'll go into individual classrooms or, or bring, you know, a whole grade level out to one of the learning pods in, in the hallways or in the, in the hub, in the lobby to do some whole group lessons around social emotional learning. She did one the other day about the size of the problem. So, you know, is it a small problem, is it a medium problem, is it a large problem? And then kind of how do you react in those situations? Another thing, this is, you know, something that I'm going to do is I'm calling it fireside chats because I couldn't think of a better name. But just kind of getting together with each grade level and just having conversations with the kids to reconnect with them, to hear, you know, how they're doing, what, you know, kind of what's going on, what's on their minds, you know, what challenges they're having in school, out of school. You know, kind of what's going on in the playground, what, just what's on their mind. I think what I'll do is I'll kind of weave into there some, some character education components that we used to do as a, as a whole school. But there, there are different conversations that I can have with fifth grade students compared to, you know, kindergarten, first grade students. So we're going to have those be a little more, a little more targeted and just as a way to kind of reconnect and kind of bring everybody back together. So in terms of staff actions and supports, so we have two themes this year. We usually have a theme and this year we have two themes. The first one is be the reason someone smiles today. There's a video that, that we showed at the opening staff meeting and people have really kind of run with that. You know, it's funny, it's like almost every day there's an email that goes around like, you know, thank you to whoever, you know, randomly put that cup of coffee on my desk or, or, you know, whatever, whatever it is that they've, they've come up with. And then the other one is on positive vibes only, you know, we definitely believe that, you know, negative, you know, negative thinking can be contagious, but positive thinking can be contagious as well. So we want to try to, you know, kind of focus on the positive as we, as we go through the year and get back on track. Also some staff appreciation things, we started a pay it forward, kind of behind the scenes little, little program, you know, do something nice for someone and then they'll do some, something nice for somebody else on the staff. And then also we're doing Monday shout outs. So we're, I started a couple of weeks ago, I chose a particular group of staff members who, you know, really could use, you know, a round of applause for appreciation. So I made an announcement in the afternoon and then the whole school gave that group of staff members a round of applause. It was, it was our lunch recess monitors and now that group will do the next shout out, which was supposed to be this Monday, but we had an early release, so it'll probably be on Wednesday. But that's, that's, you know, just kind of things to keep the, keep the morale and the culture, you know, positive and moving forward. And then in terms of staff voice, so we're, we're doing those, those, you know, formal monthly mood meter check ins. But then also I'm meeting with each grade level every month, just to kind of sit down again, similar to the fireside chat with the kids, but, you know, talk about curriculum initiatives. You know, talk about what they need in order to be successful and for the kids to be successful. Just kind of a, a set schedule time where we can kind of come together and, and address grade level needs and issues. So this is a picture from, I believe this is one of our first grade classrooms. So you can see all the way in the back right hand corner there, there's a purple cart. So that's our iPad cart. Every classroom has either an iPad cart or Chromebook cart. There's a document projector on top of it and also the, it looks like the tripod from the old iPads that held the iPads during remote learning is still there. You can also see the student that's in the front there. Every student has a regular seat, but then they also have a wiggle seat. So whichever they're, they're more comfortable using, they have that option. All right. So in terms of academics, so when we look at 2019, the, the last time that we gave MCAS compared to this year, you can see grade three ELA is the first, the first pair of bars there. Grade three LA, you know, we, we stayed roughly the same. We dropped a couple of points, grade three math, we dropped a couple of points. Grade four ELA, we stayed exactly the same. Grade four math went down slightly, grade five ELA, we actually went up. Grade five math, we went up as well and grade five science, technology and engineering, we also went up. So, you know, relatively speaking, our MCAS results were, I would say similar to the way our students typically perform, you know, up and down, you know, maybe by a couple of points, but, but overall pretty similar. That wasn't expected, by the way, I, I expected our, I expected we'd go down, you know, 10 to 15, 20 points in each subject based on the, you know, the environment that we were, that we were trying to teach in. So it's pretty, pretty phenomenal, the, you know, definitely, you know, hats off to the teachers, you know, the, the additional hours that they put into, you know, turning their, their lessons into virtual lessons. And then the parents at home that made, I mean, all kinds of adjustments to their work schedules and their, their lives so that they could support the kids. I mean, just, it's really incredible. So when we break it down, we look at just ELA MCAS, so grade three, like I said, you know, went down slightly, grade four stayed the same, grade five went up slightly. So pretty similar. These are our aims web numbers, so this is a literacy composite. So we do a number of sub tests and they kind of put it all together into one composite literacy score. So in kindergarten, for example, we have 80% of our students are at the average or above average level. First grade, we have 75% of students at that level. Grade two, 84%, grade three, 92% and grade four as well, 92%, grade five, 94%. So, so our, our students in, in reading are, you know, are very strong. We have that little dip in, in first grade, you know, kind of the K to two grade levels. That is where historically we always put our earlier intervention, we put our focus with our RTI model in the, in the early grades and get them ready. So by third grade, they can kind of fly on their own. So when I take a look at ELA, we, we looked at the, at the question level. So we looked at the, the questions that we performed at or below the state average. So if you look, the parentheses are, you know, like the first one is a grade three, there was a grade three question that the, the topic was identifying the thoughts of the speaker of a poem. We were one percentage point below the state average. You know, there's another question there that we were talking about the character's feelings were eight percentage points below the, the state average. So, so when I kind of went through and kind of, and highlighted these, these words in red. And, and when I look at that, those words, the, the two categories that, that come out to me is that we, we, we performed at a lower level than we'd like on higher level thinking questions. So any of these questions, interestingly, about thoughts, feelings and meanings seem to be the ones that, that tripped us up a little bit. And so that kind of speaks to the SEL work that we're going to be doing. And then also going back into attacks and finding supporting evidence, that's, you know, something developmentally that, you know, comes at different times for kids. I remember in, in high school, you know, having that kind of drilled into us, going back into the texture, allowed to go back in and find, and find the evidence. So the actions around ELA, you know, increasing the SEL work with ruler and second step. Also increasing this exposure for students to poetry and stories that promote that higher level analysis of thoughts, feelings and meanings of things. And then also the PD focus this year, the science of reading, as you heard earlier, in grades K through five, I think will certainly help in ELA. This is, this is kind of a neat picture. This is one of the breakout spaces in, I think that's an upstairs hallway. So in, throughout the hallways and in the classrooms, we have these kind of, you know, Florida almost ceiling dry erase boards that's either actually painted on, directly on the wall. And so you'll see groups of kids go out and use these to, to solve problems together. So when you, when you look at our MCAS scores in math, 2019 versus 2021, in grade three, we, we went down a little bit, looks about seven points there. Grade four, we went down about four points, grade five, we went up, you know, seven points. So kind of that, you know, kind of up and down a few. You know, I think overall, I, I've never been thrilled that our ELA scores in general are, you know, 10 to 20 points higher than our, our math scores, just kind of in general. It's kind of how it's, how it's been for a number of years. So a number of years ago, we, we talked about, you know, having a math specialist that could kind of help us get more out of our, our, our math curriculum program and help provide embedded PD for the, for teachers and, and that sort of thing. So I know Jennifer mentioned that earlier, but just wanted to mention as well. So then when you look at our aims web math composite, so again, you know, sub tests that we, that we kind of apply and go together into an overall score. Grade one, we have 75% of our students that are average or above. Then we have the kind of the jump up in grade two and beyond, 90% in grade two, 94% in grade three, 98% in grade four and 94% in grade five. So when I look at the questions that we, that we, that we got tripped up on in math, you know, again, kind of similar setup here. Grade four, we actually didn't have any questions that we were at or below the state average. Everything was, was, was above the state average quite a bit. Excuse me. And then it's funny, we have this one down here, grade five, it was divided decimal by hundreds. Sorry, divided decimal two hundredths by a whole number. We were 23 points but, below the state average, which is just not typical, a little bit of an outlier there. So, so what we're, what I'm seeing kind of as a general theme there, it's, you know, multi-step higher level analytical problem solving are things that, that seem to trip our kids up a little bit, you know, on individual questions. You know, when you go back and look at this, this is one, two, three, four, five, this is just six questions in, you know, on all of the tests. So grade three had two questions we got tripped up on, on grade five had four. So we're, we're literally talking about, you know, the question level. So what we're going to do is supplement our enrichment efforts with whole class collaborative multi-step problem solving projects. I mean, this, this just like screens out the project rooms, that's what they were designed for. So we're, you know, we're going to encourage the teachers to leverage, leverage those spaces and kind of get out there and get, get the kids working together on, on those collaborative multi-step problem solving projects, kind of longer projects. We're also going to provide additional opportunities for students to communicate in math. So we call it math talk about solutions to complex problems. So the more they're able to talk it out and hear others explain their thinking, the, the better they'll be able to attack problems on their own when the time comes. You know, and then we want to kind of continue to investigate that math, ELA math differential, you know, why is it that we're a little bit, you know, lower in math than ELA? I mean, I think it is a state, a state trend as well, but you know, time on learning, I know we, we do, you know, our time on learning is, is a little bit stronger in ELA than math. But taking a look at the curriculum and, you know, how, how we can kind of support that as well. So just wanted to end by saying again, you know, thank you to the, the students and we, we just have awesome students, they're great kids, you know? People ask me all the time about like, you know, the problems that I, that I kind of encounter in school and, you know, the, the problems that, that we have with, with our students are, you know, they're, they're, they're very few. They're, they're just, they're great kids when they, you know, when, when they make a mistake, they're, you know, they're, they take responsibility and they're, and, and they're ready to, to learn. They're very respectful and kind and, I mean, all the things that, that we'd want all of our kids to be. You know, our staff who just, you know, they're just the hardest working people I think I've ever encountered. They really blew me away last year. I just, I couldn't believe, you know, what they all did to get us here. You know, our parents that, that, you know, just every time we turn around now that we're able to invite them back in the building in a limited basis, you know, they're, they're right there doing all sorts of things to, to show us how, how much they're, that they appreciate us. You know, our, our school committee, you guys have just been so supportive. I mean, that was not an easy thing for you to go through last year either. But, you know, you, you helped us kind of stay, stay afloat in our community. You know, we, we really love our new home that we're learning and growing in and we, you know, we want you to come visit us. It's, it's your home as well. So, you know, any, any questions, thoughts or ideas you have, I'm, I'm here.
Thank you so much for that great presentation.
Thank you.
School committee people, do you have, I'm glad you're, you seem healthier than Jen, so that's good.
I do feel healthier, yes.
Do you guys have questions or comments or feedback for John?
This is Eric, I actually just have one quick question. John, thank you again for the tour today, it was great. It was great to see the school and be able to visit all the different areas. So thanks again for that. Similar, I guess I'm stealing Kate's question to Jen earlier, but in looking at least at the composite data, not really surprising, I think, to see the first grade down a bit just because they spent such a significant portion of the year at home, new facts and, you know, concepts in first grade, obviously. So I'm just curious about RTI there, like with how that's going to be rolled out and seeing, you know, second through fifth, particularly third through fifth, performing so highly in that data. Just curious if that helps you be able to focus your resources more on the younger grades where they might need it more.
Yeah, it definitely, it definitely does. We, we hope for our data to look like that so that we can continue to, to have that early intervention focus where, you know, we, we really kind of hit, hit them at the younger ages or the younger grades, you know, heavily. So that when they get to the upper grades, they're, they're in good shape. You know, I think, you know, I guess one caveat is we are a little behind the curve this year. So AIMS Web Plus, the implementation of that was something that kind of, it was a decision that was made last spring and, and this fall, we had to kind of get up and running with training and collecting the data. And we did, we did have some COVID delays, I'll say there in, in collecting the data. But we do have, we have all of the data now and we're ready to start working with groups. So we're forming groups right now. You know, we obviously, there, there's a lot less need in the upper grades, so, so we can just, you know, continue what we've always done focusing in those, in the lower grades.
Thanks.
I'm going to echo, I'm going to echo Teresa's comment to her question to Jen, do you have what you need?
That's a good question. You know, I, I think we do, I mean, we, we're still, we're still functioning in an active construction site. You know, so it's much less active than what we're used to. I mean, the building's not shaking, which is, which is nice, our pencils aren't rolling off the desk and that sort of thing. You know, I think there will be another kind of, you know, time of change on the horizon. When we open the drop off loop and, and open the front door and, you know, a lot of our logistics are going to have to change in that way. You know, we've talked a lot about having kind of shared leadership in terms of literacy and math specialists, you know, across the district, so that we would, you know, have, you know, literacy coach that is shared between the two schools and a math coach that's shared between the two schools, you know, share best practices. I always say to my, my teachers, when I evaluate them and observe them, the benefit that I have is, is that, you know, I, I get to observe hundreds of, of lessons every year. So I'm able to say, you know, oh, in, in this situation, I, I've seen somebody do this, that works really well. So kind of having somebody with boots on the ground that, that can do that, you know, that'll be something we talk about through the budget process. But I, I think we do, I think we, I think we really do have what we need. You know, when, I feel like when, you know, it kind of starts at the top and kind of it works its way through, throughout the organization, you know, when, when you have, you know, people that take care of people that take care of people that take care of people, when, when you get down to the, you know, the end user, the students, you know, they're happy and successful. So I think we're in good shape, thank you for asking though.
That's awesome. Anybody else have questions or feedback for John? Okay, John, I think you're off the hook, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now that you've seen all the presentations, are there any kind of district level questions that we can answer for you? Or if we can't answer now, kind of go back and, and come back with some feedback.
Not as much of a question, maybe just a comment or, you know, something to put on everybody's radar for moving forward. You know, being a regional district, we talk a lot about equity across schools. And I think that there's a striking difference in the data that we're looking at between Memorial and Essex Elementary. I think it's less important how we got there and more important what we're going to do with that information. Knowing that it, it sounds to me like from Jennifer's presentation, Essex Elementary is kind of all hands on deck right now. Reading specialists are spending most of their time in K through one. There's not a lot of math support left over despite, you know, striking deficits on the math MCAS in third and fourth grade. The school counselor at EES is stretched incredibly thin. That doesn't seem to be the case at Memorial. So, you know, as a, as a regional district, I think we really need to be talking about how we are going to bring our two elementary schools back up to, to even footing. How we can direct our resources to support areas that are in more in need of support. And I, I want to be really clear that that's not a comment about how we got here and that's not anything, you know, I have nothing negative to say about the teachers and the supports that already exist at EES, but I think that we have some work ahead of us and I think it's really important for us. the teachers and the supports that already exist at EES, but I think that we have some work ahead of us and I think it's really important for us, you know, to, to focus on that.
My question slash comment was, was nearly the same, um, same, similar idea, and especially coming out of the, the strategic planning process, knowing that we're really trying to deal with, you know, vertical alignment and making sure both elementarys are on the same track. And by the time the kids get to middle school. So my question, I guess, is at what point, maybe there's already a, a, a point where this sort of happens. At what point do we look at the discrepancies? You know, in the two presentations, it seems like, and I may have just been reading this my way, but it seems like where Essex has been really strong with the social emotional learning component and yet needs some more intensive academic remediation right now, it almost seems reversed over at Memorial. And so, you know, is there collaboration, you know, to happen? Maybe not right now, when we're just coming out of things and trying to get things going, um, you know, get things back on track in each school. But at what point do we start looking at that moving forward to make sure that, um, that that's a, a consistent experience across the district?
Anyone else?
I think, I think Kate and Teresa captured it well. And I know, at least in my six years, that's been a, a constant, hmm, how does that go on? And they're, I celebrate the differences and diversity between the schools. And again, I've seen the process and hope, and I'm sure that to some extent, that going on of how do you learn between them and share resources? So, yeah, it's going to be something to watch as we come through recovery.
I, one of the things I noticed in the presentations was how, um, I mean, I've been watching these presentations for longer than some of you. Was how much more on the same page the schools are with a lot of things curriculum wise, uh, assessment wise. Even just watching the presentations. Um, so I think that I know that we've done a lot of work. The thing that I wanted to say, uh, and, and not to discount your comments, I mean, all really good comments and feedback, I'm sure. I, I loved the way they're wrapping in the social emotional piece into the academics. I think that's really important and I was really excited to see that. That's just my two cents. Uh, anyone else?
I'll just, I'll just say more to come. I think John alluded to the fact that there's some ongoing discussion about restructuring options, which allow for more, redistribution of resources based on need on an ongoing basis, as opposed to them being, everything being tied to a school. And the deployment of those resources happening only within the building. So if you look at staffing, staffing is equitable between the two schools in terms of numbers on a page. But staffing isn't deployed identically in the same way in each building. Some people are used to do different pieces. So Jen's been very proactive in taking a model, um, taking the model they had and reorganizing it to support the current need in front of them. I think there's a lot of conversation going on about how we can move more in unison going forward. And I think you'll hear about it during the budget process.
What a nice segue that is to, uh, roll right into the budget timeline, Pam.
Yes. Let me pull that up for everybody. One second. Whenever I need this document.
Well, while we're waiting for it to come up, everybody's invited to come to the select, the joint select board finance committee meeting in Essex tomorrow at the town hall where we will be, uh, Pam and Avi will doing, be doing sort of a budget 101 presentation. So anyone who's interested in learning more about the budget could definitely come to that person at seven o'clock tonight. I'll be there.
Sarah, is, is there any live streaming of that or now it's just an in-person event?
Um, I, I think that, um, there's going to be, uh, hopefully, if it all works out, that it will be recorded for future viewing, but it probably not live streamed.
Okay. Thank you.
So just up in front of you is the budget calendar for this year. So you'll see on the 16th, we're going to begin our initial budget discussions. Which is usually the very high end, what are we hoping to achieve, a review of the goals and what the key drivers are going forward. By the second of December, you're going to receive, um, the tentative budget. And we'll present that to you that evening. That then gets, uh, turned over to a public hearing and that's a, a meeting. Unlike our public comment, it's a meeting at which we dedicate the time to soliciting feedback from, um, the community. And it's also the, the time in which both boards of selectmen and finance come and it's an opportunity for them to see where we are in the initial stages, ask questions, um, share comments. Uh, this, this meeting is dictated by the regional agreement with the intended purpose of us being out very early in the season, with information about our budget development so that both towns have it as they begin their process. I think what we've seen through collaboration and over the years is what was once very early now seems almost too late for some. So I think you're, you're seeing a lot of pre-work being done even as, you know, early in the year is August and September. So that people have a sense of where we're going, uh, directionally with the budget. So we'll take feedback on, at the public hearing on the 15th. And then come back and do a little bit more work on the budget in January, hold our second hearing, which is typically at Essex Elementary. Right now we're slating both of the public hearings to be virtual. Just because we get more participation, we can easily shift that if it's the will of the committee. I, we can go either way. Final budget is coming up for adoption, which means final approval and sent to towns on February 1st. So it seems like a long time. It moves very quickly. And I think for those who are newer to the process, what we know is that it moves quickly, but we do most of our budget planning with, um, assumptions, uh, well calculated assumptions. Avi is a master of modeling things and tracking trends. But typically we don't have real numbers from the state, we, until end of school year or our healthcare numbers until, um, almost, you know, February, March. Sometimes we can get a handle on that healthcare number as we go into final budget. But that's still, it, it's usually still in flux a bit. In this year, I think we may be adding the fact that we're at the negotiating table. So typically we have the contractual numbers all locked down and we can project that out for three years. That will also be an unknown this year. So we'll be doing a lot of, um, budget discussions around assumptions, of where we think things will land. Then everything culminates with the two, uh, town meetings in April and May. And that's it. And then we start again on FY24. So for newer members, I don't know if there are any questions, comments, concerns, thoughts about the budget calendar? Things you'd like us to keep in mind as we prepare for the 16th?
Uh, just a note for newer people, it's really good to take, like, write down all these dates. If you don't have it somewhere, it gets a little overwhelming, but a lot of them are, are, are our regularly scheduled meetings. So you already have a lot of these dates on your calendar.
December 15th is the one that throws us usually because it's a, it's a Wednesday in December. But the public hearings are really critical. That's when we, where we, the public has to talk to the committee about the priorities and what people are hoping to see. I think our hope this year is that without, you know, COVID is kind of in its place. It's not the center stage. People have access to the meetings virtually. The hope is to get, you know, a, a good number of people on the line, listening to where we're at. Because as we know from last year, we're looking out on the horizon and knowing that we will likely need a, a budget correction sometime in the future. We, you know, we have all of the same, um, concerns and challenges that we did last year, which is we know we'll be using reserves to manage our growth numbers. How much of reserves is it appropriate to use? What's the long-term impact of that? So even though we'll be working with assumptions, that, that not too much changes in our actual operating budget structure from year to year. But we have some big picture questions that we're going to have to continue to wrestle with.
That Wednesday meeting, uh, what, what time is that? So I can add it to my calendar?
Sure. We typically start the public hearings at seven and do like an hour business meeting ahead of time.
Okay.
Is, is, am I correct in that? Do we want to go with a six o'clock start? It doesn't, does not matter to me for the group to decide.
That's what we usually do and it takes the place usually of a regular meeting. Like usually we would have our meeting on Tuesday and instead we do the whole thing on Wednesday. Is that what we usually do?
Well, the December one, we meet the week before and then it's just strictly the public hearing. We don't try to do too much. Sometimes if there's a few vouchers, we'll just pass those.
Yeah. So typically for the vouchers, we haven't needed a full hour of business meeting, maybe 15, 20 minutes at most.
Sometimes there's stuff going on we have to talk about.
Okay.
All right.
My pencil in, in six to be safe, Chris.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
All right. I'm looking forward to, uh, this year's budget season because it will be so much nicer to be doing it not during COVID. I think we had a lot of communication issues last year with some of our member towns and, um, people not really understanding how the process worked. So I think it's going to be really helpful to be able to have all these hearings and meetings that we usually do. And hopefully people will be engaged and learning about the process as we go through it this year. I got nothing else. All right.
I guess, I guess I'd like to, Sarah, thank you for moderating Pam and Avi and the rest of all the presenters tonight. Thanks for sharing that. I'll move that we adjourn for the evening.
Uh, we haven't had school.
Oh, do we have? Oh, yeah, that's right. Well, you just got it for me.
Any comment before Ken makes his motion?
No comment.
No comment. Okay. Go ahead, Ken. Sorry.
That was a good point. I, I usually, I should know to expect a clarifying question, but I think we got through those. Now, all right. So move that we adjourn for the evening? Do I have a second?
Again, Burke.
All right. Um, I'll go down the roll call. Eric? Matt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thanks, everybody. Thank you to all the members of the public who came and listened tonight.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. Good night.